Guys. Is our chair around or did you run away?
He's right there. He's in the middle of the screen.
Oh, okay.
Are you having some technical audio issues?
Oh, oh, no, is that because I came on?
Kaapuni and Megan signed on.
You should have come down.
Um, why don't you um lug out, lug off and then lug back in, Chair Smith?
Adrian's on, so we got eleven.
I'm sorry, is that uh can anyone hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, I yeah, okay, so we're gonna get started a little late. How are we um how are we on uh forum, Sidell?
You're good, you're good.
Okay, so I'll open the meeting, sorry I'm tad late, but uh first on the agenda, we have Honolulu Police Department, District One. Is Lieutenant uh Sagucio here?
Hey, how's it going, guys? I'm having a little bit difficulty with the video, but um yeah. Uh Lieutenant Segusio, representing the District One Community Responsibility. Um if you guys have any more particular questions in regards to the stats, you guys can go to the public website, that's www.honolulupd.org. Uh happy early Thanksgiving, everyone, hope everyone's safe and well today. Uh the stats for this month of October, for the past month of October, is motor vehicle thefts is gonna be seven, from the previous is thirteen, so it's down. Burglaries is one, from the previous month it was one, theft it was eight, previous seven, UMVs or car break-ins were three, from the previous month it was four, assaults were zero, previous month was one. And then for the following three, uh sex assaults, graffiti and drug cases were all zero for both months, yeah. Total cost per service for your area was six hundred and ninety-two, uh from the previous was seven oh seven. Uh there's uh no criminal breaches at this point to report. Uh the safety tip for the month, uh we're gonna go with the scams again, these telephone scams, they are real prevalent at this point in time. Uh they're attacking our Kupuna or our more mature uh constituents. Uh they are utilizing uh certain uh scams in regards to uh possible warrants, outstanding warrants. Uh missing jury duty, uh they even also have this yes scam where they do robotic calls and then they try to record you saying yes, so that they can use that um recorded voice to do unscrupulous things. So what I'm asking is uh if our constituents or board um our community members to just screen your calls, um screen your calls, uh usually these robotic calls don't get past the answering machine. Uh if they do, I would just hang up. Uh majority of the time, they do not have enough or all the information, so if they call, if they're calling from some sort of like uh utility service, Hawaiian Electric, Board of Water Supply. They won't have account number information or your address information. Another telltale sign is uh heavy accents. So if you have any of those types of situations, just go ahead and hang up and then make um go ahead and contact that entity or that business on your own. Uh locate a good phone number through a website or through um I mean the old school phone book, um and and call them yourselves. Other than that, I'm gonna give back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the lieutenant from the board? Uh Mason, go ahead please.
Yeah, I just uh uh happy Thanksgiving to you, since uh that's that's it, this isn't our last meeting today, but um. Somebody told me yesterday. That they had a helicopter flying in Pa'oa Valley. And they had a whole bunch of, I don't know, SWAT guys or anything running around in the neighborhood looking for somebody. Do you know anything about that?
Uh in regards to that, um normally the um thirty-nine ninety, that's the call sign for our helicopter, they usually fly um in those general areas and what they're generally looking for. Is um outstanding coat-in vehicles or stolen vehicles that are kind of like um hidden and away from where patrol can see. Um I I wasn't, I wasn't aware of if there was any um crime reduction units or SWAT teams in in the Pa'oa Valley area, but um um of as of yesterday. But um normally our our helicopter flies in the in the in the general vicinity of those locations. They even fly in Kalii, uh they're also looking for uh possible uh outdoor grows. In regards to marijuana grows and stuff like that, so they could have been doing that too. Um but normally they just fly during the day. If they're flying at night, then you might have um. A valid uh question in regards to that, because they they rarely fly at night, but I wouldn't be worried about anything about those helicopters yesterday.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was just one and it had a whole bunch of police running around in the neighborhood, going between houses. Somebody said some, they ran through the. Their through their garden in the backyard of the garden. So maybe they must have been chasing somebody, I don't know if they found it.
Yeah, could have, it it could have been, but you know what, let me go double check before I misspeak, but there was no information noticed um in regards to a uh a chase um through the Pa'oa Valley area.
Yeah, okay, well, I was just kidding, cuz I wasn't home, I was working and I came home and people were telling me about it, I said, oh, wow, interesting. Okay, well, if you find anything, let me know, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, well, sir, I'll I'll email you any information.
Thank you, thank you. Next up, Sylvia. Sylvia, you're um muted.
Okay, Lieutenant, um that homeless woman is back sleeping. On that corner of Pa'oa and Kani Ali'i. Right next to that gray building which used to be the Dog Patch Academy by the church. And it's it's more obvious now, it looks like it's a bunch of um. She's so tiny and she curls up, so it looks like it's a bunch of. Blankets or clothes, so it you can't tell that there's a body underneath the wrapping. And um it's more obvious now because the owners of that building cleaned. That area next to the control box, so you can see her.
Yeah, I'll go make a phone call tonight and have one of my officers go and take a look at that location uh right after the meeting.
She's usually, she's usually wearing orange.
Oh, okay.
A faded orange.
Yeah, usually when I'm working at night, I usually uh take a drive up past uh Mason's house and check out Booth Park, so. Um I I'll go in, I'll have one of my units double check it, cuz I'm off tonight, but I'll I'll go make a phone call right after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Are there any other questions from the board? Um uh Paula.
I just wanna tell Office Lieutenant Segusio. That um we appreciate his help. Uh have you found out anything more about School Street, I mean um Henry Street? And what's going on there, because I'm getting all kinds of calls about the cars parking everywhere. And then I heard that there's another car that has been parked, an extra car, so there's more than three cars on the street, there's now four.
Yeah, I forwarded that information, Paula, to um the District Five CPT Office via email. Um I'm gonna let um Lieutenant Hatiko uh comment on that. I think they've been making checks also, but I did forward that information that. We had spoke about when I called you that one afternoon. Um yeah, I'm I'm gonna defer that to um the District Five side.
Good, okay, thank you. And then we're having um again, the same kind of problems with pigs. And people just don't know what to do with pigs. And so this last time was because Mrs. Greby sent her pigs down from Pacific Heights. And they went to a neighbor's backyard. We wanna make sure that those pigs are being taken care of. There there are little ones, small ones, there's three of them. They've been seen up and down the valley in people's backyards. And uh also District Five, I want them to know also that it's no big deal, except that they're eating people's plants. And the third thing is that I wanna thank the people that gave information out about the pigs, because a lot of people just don't know what to do. Thank you.
You know what, Paula, let me go reach out to one of my contacts at DLNR. I have a very good friend that works for uh the Department of Natural and Land Resources. Um their office is right up the street on Talis some um somewhat, but. Let me go make a phone call and let's see what um they they tell us on how to mitigate this problem.
Yeah, cuz people call me in on, you know, my name is Paula with a P and then I gotta deal with the pigs in the picnic area, it just drives me crazy, so. I get these strange calls at night, so thank you so much.
Are there any uh further questions from the board? Uh Robert, go ahead, please, then.
Hi, uh thank you, Chair. Uh good evening, Lieutenant Segusio. Uh I'd just like to inquire, at the last month's meeting, I had requested uh. Uh if we could find out about citing the principal Honolulu Disposal Services, cuz the drivers, it's hard to catch the drivers when they're leaving the cans, but. The cans are still being left in front of the bus stop.
Uh excuse me, I'm I'm sorry, Robert, if I could break in, I do have uh the mayor representative had a report regarding this issue. Uh unfortunately, she couldn't join us tonight, but um I I can let you know real quick on just one second that uh DTS. And Lieutenant, I'm sorry, if I could break in, so DTS um requested that Honolulu Disposal. Place the dumpsters in another area that doesn't interfere with bus operations. DTS received confirmation, a confirmation email. From Honolulu Disposal confirming that their operations team will address the issue, so.
Okay, uh thank you, Chair.
So I I guess we we just have to to wait and see. Lieutenant, I don't know if you wanna add anything, but but that's what's been. And also, I think Lisa Lisa Leonardo from uh Councilmember's uh Dos Santos Tam's office will probably comment too. Although she may say the same thing, so I'm not sure.
Okay, uh thank you, Chair. So Lieutenant Segusio, I'll defer uh for later in the meeting with with the others. Appreciate your help and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Absolutely, um I I'll keep making checks though. I mean, honestly, we've been checking it also and then we've been kind of noticing it. Uh that the those big trucks are coming into the area like kind of really early in the morning, but yeah, I'm gonna defer also to the city uh in regards to that, because um. Uh it's something that they can have a little bit more um push or leeway in regards to getting that remedied.
Yeah, uh yeah, thank you, and I just wanted to add, um they're actually coming three-thirty now, so they moved up the time even earlier in the morning. So there's also, there's noise pollution and placement of dumpsters, but uh thank you for your help, I just wanted to let you know, but thank you for your help and uh happy Thanksgiving, Lieutenant.
Thank you, you too, sir.
Thank you. Are there uh any last questions for uh the lieutenant? Hearing none, uh thank you most so much, sir. Thank you for being such a great service through the year to our board. I think I can speak on behalf of the board that we greatly appreciate. What you do and we wish you and your fellow officers uh safe and happy uh holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, you guys have a great day.
You too, thank you. Uh next up, we have District Five HPD Lieutenant.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's Lieutenant Kritin Hatiko with District Five. Uh I'm assigned to the night watch, I'm in charge of the night watch. Uh let me give you some statistics first. For the month of October, we had three reported burglaries in your area, um eight reported motor vehicle thefts. Uh eighteen uh general thefts and fifteen thefts from vehicles. Um it's it's up quite a bit from September, uh we had a thousand twenty-two calls for service and uh up from nine-ten in September, but. Um that's kind of the pattern we see when it starts to ramp up towards the holiday season. Um people start to get kind of desperate during that time. Um I don't know if you guys are aware, we have um. Islandwide, uh it's it's referred to as a smash and grab type of thefts. Where they're throwing rocks into store windows to gain access to the stores, stealing registers and products and things like that. Um indirectly, it affects um the citizens in your area, particularly if they have, if they own a Kia or a Hyundai. Um vehicle. Uh apparently on YouTube, uh someone put a a video out of how to steal these types of cars. And apparently, it's very easy to get access to um to get the car started and to to have it moving. So if you or your constituents ha- uh own such a vehicle, a Kia or a Hyundai, um you might wanna um. Just give them a heads up if they're not able to park it in their garage, if it's street parked. Um in the Kalii Valley area around here, there's been quite a few thefts of those vehicles so far, and I think it's primarily due to the that video being so widespread. Um but yeah, just to warn you guys, um you might, if if you're gonna be, uh your cars, your vehicle's gonna be parked for a while. Um some people have recommended disconnecting the battery, um so it doesn't start. Um some vehicles, you can connect, disconnect part of the electrical system if you understand that, or if you can have someone help you, so that your vehicle cannot be started, um that sort of thing. Um not not to panic anyone, because it 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 doesn't really, uh the smash and grabs haven't affected the the residential neighborhoods, but. Um the little strip malls in each neighborhood have been targeted. Um are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board for the lieutenant? Uh Paula, please.
Um I'm part of District Five and um with our Neighborhood Watch and our community policing group. We wanna thank District Five for everything you've done and we were successful as far as I'm concerned with the Halloween. Uh where when officer came out to help us to to take care of the traffic, cuz we had quite a few people in the area. And our people, um Matt, Matt Cheney and um Berwin Ito, they all came out to help. Because they're in charge, of course, I'm just a volunteer slave, so I just wanna make sure that you know that, um if you need anything, just let us know. And we're available twenty-four seven. Thank you.
I really, I really appreciate that, Mrs. Kershigah.
Thank you.
And I live, and I live at Five-O. Hawaii Five-O, on Wood, whiskey, Bible whiskey.
Thank you. Are there any uh. Are there any questions from uh anybody or uh Lieutenant Hatiko?
No, just just thanks.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming out tonight and thank you very much and have a safe holiday too, please, for you and your staff.
Everyone, take care.
Thank you. Great. Uh next up, we have Ne- Neighborhood Security Watch, Paula. Uh Paula, you got muted for that brief time.
I'm sorry, um I don't wanna, I don't wanna take too much time, but we did cover a lot of stuff, especially with the pigs and people calling. But um we've had some strange things happening where it's um like a Bible thumper that goes from house to house, taps on the windows. And he she, he and she are together carrying a Bible and then down the street was another car that um. Was going into people's yards and looking in windows, so I just wanna make everyone know that this is going on. And if anyone comes to your door, don't open the door unless you know them. And then um the real serious one is the scam calls. We've had, my house, they've had at least fifteen in one day. Now it's Spectrum keeps calling me and Spectrum does not, cuz I know Lieutenant Segusio did not mention Spectrum, but. Spectrum is also calling and they want to lower my rate and get it down to two hundred and ten dollars from two hundred and sixty dollars or whatever. And then I find out they're not real, because if you look at the number and then you look at the area number from where they're calling. They say they're in New York, but actually they're calling from Texas, so kind of put it together as a puzzle. And then don't answer it if you think it's a scam, you'll lose your money for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I mean, I would add that, you know, I obviously, there's the technology to spoof numbers, so you can have people from India having eight oh eight numbers, so just so. I mean, I hope everyone knows that. Uh are there any questions for Neighborhood Security Watch from the board? Robert, uh seeing none from the board, Robert, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Paula, I just wanted to make a comment. So I live uh along San Antonio and Los Altanos. So there's a lot of traffic right in front of me. My home has been burglarized three times, once while I was sleeping. Uh my mailbox and my neighbor's mailbox have been broken into and taken, I think, at least three times. Neighbor behind me was charged ten thousand dollars on his credit card and then my other neighbor behind me's cars was was robbed or burglarized while she went to work, so. I don't let anyone walk in our lane and our lane is a private lane and interestingly enough. Uh I don't even appreciate when a missionary is come by, because we've had so much uh theft here, so I've asked them not to come in the lane unless they've been invited. And on one occasion, a group of them were pretty uh standoffish and were upset and we're kind of pushing their right to come in, so. Fortunately, one of them was an ex-police officer, so and he insisted, so I said, I'm placing you in under citizen's arrest. So he sat down, I called the police department and the police department had them leave, but unfortunately, it's it has, it had had to go that far for me to protect my lane from strangers coming down. Um especially with a group of missionaries and, you know, I'm not trying to be a. You know, offensive to others, but with the the high theft that's happened in our in our lane, even with uh those coming around with bibles. Uh unless they're invited and my lane is a private lane and it says so, uh you know, I I really don't, I don't allow strangers to walk down my lane. So it it's a very sad situation in the modern times that it has come to this, but for me, that's how I've had to deal with it. I just thought I'd share. Because of the high theft and what I've had to do to protect my lane. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any follow-ups, Pat?
I'd just like to um recommend that whenever you see strange people in your neighborhood, don't be afraid to take their photographs. A lot of times, if they are up to no good, when they see that you're taking their photograph, they probably won't come back into your neighborhood. Because I do that all the time and we haven't seen certain people back in our neighborhood again. So that's my recommendation, take a photo of the people, take several, front, back. Um any tattoos, anything that can identify them, just take a photo of them. And um it's amazing how they will stay away from your neighborhood once they know that you know what they look like. And that you can use that photograph to identify them to the um police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh are there any, uh Paula?
Just wanted to tell you that Pat works really hard in our area. She knows everything that's going on and she also helps do. Everything twenty-four hours a day in this area. If anyone has any calls or wanna talk to her about something, just call me and let me know and I'll. Try to sort it out so that she can get the call and answer it wisely. Just don't go around without knowing, know what's going on. Cuz um I think um Audrey Hidano, she might have learned something when she came to our meeting and so did Pat Smith, so. Please, if you need help, you need to let us know if you're in this area that you can get hold of us and that goes for Robert also.
Thank you. Uh any last thoughts, comments, questions? Hearing none, uh thank you very much, Paula, that was a very informative um presentation. Next up, we have Border Water Supply and we have Jimmy Yanos. He's in the, I guess, at downtown?
Yeah, yeah, uh do I stand here there?
Yeah, I hope you have no papers to show us, cuz that's gonna be kind of.
Uh okay, uh good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy, I'll be representing Border Water. I'll start with our main break report for the last one. There was four main breaks. The first one was on October third, that was an eight-inch cast iron pipe on twenty-four fifty-four Kani Ali'i Ave. The second one was on October twentieth, that was an eight-inch PVC pipe on Wood Street. The third one was October twenty-third, that's an eight-inch cast iron pipe on twenty-one thirty-eight Kani Ali'i Ave. And the final one was October thirtieth, that was a sixteen-inch cast iron pipe on Awailo Lemo Street. Now I'm gonna be talking about our general water announcements. I'm gonna be talking about our twenty-twenty-four poster and poetry contest. The Border Water Supply has launched its twenty-twenty-four poster and poetry contest. The poster contest is open to grades K through six and the poetry contest is open from grades seven through twelve. This year's theme is our water, our hope. And the deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. For more information, please go to www dot borderwatersupply dot com slash WCW contest. Um now I'll be going over some items that we talked about last month. There aren't any new updates concerning the water system improvements project in Lower Nuanu on Pu'uiva, that Pu'uiva project. Um but just as like a fast recap, last month, we talked about how the construction job was awarded to RMY Construction, the contractor, on April tenth. The contractor wanted to push out the notice to proceed. Uh to February second next year because of delays with pipe materials and we still need approval from the State Historic Preservation Division, so. We're, we aren't exactly sure when the project is gonna is gonna start, but we're thinking early twenty-twenty-four. And the second item from last month was that there was a concern that the metal plates for the construction project on Kani Ali'i Road weren't secured well. Because there was a lot of noises when cars drove over them, so I'm happy to report that the Border Water Supply contractors secured the plates on October twenty-fifth. And if the orig- if the issue arises again, please feel free to contact the Border Water Supply's Communication Office at eight oh eight seven four eight five three six eight. Or email, contact us at hbw s dot org. With that, that's the end of my report, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions uh from the board for the Border Water Supply? Paula? Oh, sorry, Audrey, I'll get to you next, please. I'm sorry, Paula. Oh, Paula, you're muted.
About three months ago, I brought up the fact that, I think it was three months, I'm thinking back in my mind. Uh that the bridge at Pu'uiva is all blocked. Now I wanna know if the Border Water Supply is gonna do anything, because I brought it up to, every single person has anything to do with this board. As far as city council, the state, blah, blah, blah. And if we have any big rains, we're gonna have a big problem despite the fact that the water's leaking from a pipe. I just wanna know, is the water supply, Border Water Supply responsible to help clean out that ditch before it floods all the way down to. The um it goes all the way down to the academy, Baptist Academy. And there's houses below Laimee Road that might be flooded, so I wanna know who's responsible for that and it's going on too long. Thank you.
Um off the top of my head, I'm not sure Border Water is responsible for cleaning that ditch, but I'll definitely um ask someone at Border Water and I'll get back to you.
Yes, please do, because somebody's gonna get drowned down there and it's not a pretty sight, trees and all kinds of things growing in that ditch. And it's above the Pu'uiva Bridge when you look up the mountain. Somebody has to be responsible for it. I've sent letter to Case, uh Ed Case, I haven't heard back. Um and I told everyone that it comes to this board, including Carol, Carl Rhodes and uh Jen. Uh nope, not good talk, I can't even say. Yeah, I'm not good, I'm not good with Japanese words, sorry. Um so we need somebody to really look at that seriously before. Um, so we need somebody to really look at that seriously before there's a bad flood. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have some information from the mayor's report regarding New Oneu Stream and some tree removals, tree removals, but I'm not sure where that affects. So maybe, uh, Jimmy, if you could just sort of clarify, does Border Water Supply have jurisdiction over that particular spot? And so that way, at least we know. I mean, if, if, if you say you don't, then you don't, or at least the Border Water, but if you could kind of give us a definitive, um, answer to that question, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, well, hold on, yeah, next up, Sylvia, go ahead.
Um, Paula, you can, I think, I believe you can get some help by calling, um, Department of Facility Maintenance with the City and County of Honolulu because they used to come on to clear street beds. And, um, the other thing that you could do is make a complaint, I think with the Department of Emergency Management, because whenever there's a, uh, pending flood or any type of that stuff, my daughter is a volunteer with the Department, the City Department of Emergency Management. And before there's a storm, she, um, gets, she has to get in her car and go out and check the stream beds in our district. And that's so, I think that's an area where you probably can get help calling the Department of Emergency Management with the City and County of Honolulu because they do check the stream beds during emergencies.
Okay, um, let, let's defer on this issue for, uh, just a few minutes before, till we get to the mayor's report. Because I, I don't, that may have a little clarity, but probably not a lot. We can talk about more at that point, if that's okay.
All I can say is I gave everybody the information with a letter as to what was going on three months ago. Nothing's been heard. Thank you.
Well, okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other, uh, anything further for Border Water Supply from anybody?
Audrey.
Oh, Audrey, so sorry, Audrey, you're right. I, please go ahead.
Thank you. So Jimmy, on the Lower Nuuanu, the, the project that to repiping, that's been going on. Number one, um, did you first give the contractor the notice to proceed, NTP?
Ooh, I'm trying this out. Oh, did we give the contractor notice to proceed?
Yes, and then, and then, so they asked for an extension. The last I heard was at no additional cost. But did you first allow the extension to February twenty-twenty-four? You said the contractor asked, did you guys approve the extension to twenty, February twenty-twenty-four?
I will follow up on that.
And when you follow up, ask the contractor when they ordered the materials because if they order the materials late, of course, it's gonna come in late.
Okay.
So you folks better not be, you know, the tail wagging the dog. They better not be the tail wagging the dog. This project has been talked about. We have so much breakage in our neighborhood, so it's gotta happen. Thank you.
Okay.
So can you email me before the next, uh, email the chair? So you can, those of us that are in our sub-district will have the answer. Because if not, next, well, see, December, we don't have a meeting. So January, uh, you gotta wear protective gear to come to the meeting.
The PPE.
But do you understand what I'm saying, right?
Yes, yes.
It's been pushed off, pushed off, so just, I would appreciate the answer earlier. Please, um, notify the chair or the neighborhood board assistant, and they can notify us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, follow up on if we approve the notice to proceed or to delay.
No, no, did you, did you, yeah, approve the notice to proceed? Did you approve the extension to February twenty-twenty-four? Check on when they ordered the materials, because I can tell you, well, it's coming in late, but I just ordered it yesterday. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
There's no time when you order materials. So when did they order it? Or did they order it late and they're telling you they don't have it, it's coming? Yes, materials are scarcity nowadays, but then you gotta find out when they order the materials.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're, yeah, we don't want any more breakage. Thank you.
Right, right.
Thank you. Are, are there any, anything remaining? Uh, thank you very much. I will add one thing is, uh, if you see Kathleen, and I, I apologize, I don't recall her last name, but who won the manager of the year teller, congratulations, uh, from what you've seen and when she's helped us or worked with the neighborhood board systems in the community. She's been very good, so that's well deserved. Uh, so thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
My name is Kathleen Paanui.
Paanui, okay, thank you, thank you for that. But, uh, that was a great, I'm sure, well-deserved recognition, so thank you. Tell her, and just pass on.
Thanks, everyone. I will, I care what.
Thank you. Next up, we have filling of vacancies on the board. We have two vacancies in Sub District One, which is the area, um, around Punch Bowl and, you know, School Street on up. And if anyone is interested in serving in that, we can, uh, find out if you're actually in that district at a later point. Is anyone in the, uh, community interested in serving? Hearing no interest, move on. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have residents' community concerns. Are there any members of the community or anyone that would like to pass on a concern at this time? None? Okay, thank you. Um, I will add one thing. I didn't put this on, on the agenda, so I'll just say it right now, and that is, um, I keep, uh, we keep getting information from, oh, Paula, I'll get to you in a second then, from the, uh, citizens. Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I gotta tell you, read it again what it is. But essentially, it's the, um, um, the resource, uh, sort of like emergency preparedness type of resource center for each community. And I wondered, uh, just for anyone on the board that might be interested in, in being a point of contact for that group, just email me. We can't, you know, that's for the chair to appoint, and we can't take any action on it tonight. But if you'd be interested in doing that, and it's probably, it would just entail keeping up and attending a meeting once in a while. And I think Adrian's attended a meeting or so, but, but if anyone would be, want to be the point person, that would be terrific, so let me know. Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, Paula, did you want to add something?
Yes, uh, I had two things. I hope I remember. Um, one is that people are getting frustrated because we're calling up the, um, things about the graffiti, how bad it is in Nuuanu now and on the street, the street systems for the lighting. And they say, oh, there, uh, there, there are two police officers that might come and see you, which is fine, but, um, they didn't come and they didn't show. The second thing is that I had about twelve concerns about the street sign on Lower Dalset. The street sign is totally missing. I did call it in to the sign people, there it is, three months ago, and, uh, it still hasn't been re-put back in place because we have so many visitors that are getting lost up here. So those two things.
Uh, is, is the street sign issue a city or state? Do you know?
City.
Okay.
It's right, right on, um, or, um, Lower Dalset.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if it was on the poly side, so, okay. Um, that would be a good thing to bring up to, uh, council member, uh, DeSantis and staff to, uh, to follow up on that since you haven't got.
I just got calling it into street signs, they would fix it, but.
Well, yeah, so maybe they need a little push. Needs some direction, pardon the pun. Uh, any last, any, any last, uh, concerns? Hearing none, uh, thank you very much. We'll move on to our elected officials' reports. First off, we have the, uh, mayor's representative. I got a, uh, email the other day that the mayor's rep is not here. So let me, um, pass along her report. And, uh, first off, uh, regarding the New Oneu Stream, a board member raised concerns about the New Oneu Stream and how the tree removal increases flood concerns. They requested that the State Department of Land and Natural Resources require the nearby church to receive approval to change the path of the water in the stream. Uh, Department of Facilities Maintenance, uh, it just says, "has no jurisdiction in this area of concern." So I guess, as far as the mayor's report, all requests must go through the state. So, there you go. I'm sorry, when I said I had, had news about the stream, I didn't realize it was just to say, just punting. So they're punting the issue to the state, apparently. But there it is. Um, next up, we have a, uh, poly highway pedestrians. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Paula, did you want to add something on that?
I just want to tell you that the same stream I'm talking about at Puiva that goes all the way down through the neighborhood underneath Laime and comes out at the bottom closer to the academy of, um, the Baptist Academy. It's plugged at the top, and they're worried about flooding it at the bottom. And that has been on for three months already. Um, and everybody keeps talking about these things, but they want to divert the stream so they don't have to worry about it anymore. And they wanted to cut some more trees down recently. So that's the house that floods, Dill Allen's house.
Okay.
So, right at the top and right at the bottom, the same stream, same problems. Thank you.
But I, I guess this statement is saying the city has no jurisdiction over that. It's gonna be purely a DL and our issue. Does that, does that, uh, match what you've been told in the past?
You know, I don't know what it matches, but it's very, very strange. They want to keep cutting trees down and then the houses flood, so.
Well, when you say.
Divert the stream. I don't know where they divert it because it's just a narrow patch that goes through there. And if anybody from our board wants to go look at it, the family is more than willing to let you come down and look at it.
Okay.
Just.
When you say.
They already lost some trees, and they're gonna cut more trees. So that don't make sense to me.
I'm sorry, Paula, I mean, uh, Audrey, did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, so the different stream from Paula, but the first stream that you were talking about with the tree in the middle, that's been on the agenda for almost a year now. So is the governor's rep in on this meeting?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so, uh, when we get to.
Everyone was notified. Everyone.
Well, then, then why don't we defer that and, and we'll talk to the governors right when they.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very disgusting, very disgusting.
So next up, next up, we have, um, on the topic of poly highway pedestrian concerns, uh, request from the board to have a joint city-state working group to address the safety concerns of the poly highway. Department of Transportation Services, uh, says, "Statistics obtained by DTS Transportation Mobility Division confirms that the low ridership at the bus stops at Wood Street and Poly Highway, um, Kalua bound and Poly Highway across from Wood Street, townbound, do not warrant the installation of special lighting at these locations." I think we were told as much not last month, but there you go. Uh, and further, in its October two thousand twenty-three report to the Neighborhood Board Twelve, DTS reported that the average daily ridership for bus stop number three fifty located at Poly Highway and Wood Street, and that's the Kalua bound again, was point nine person boarding and ten point four persons disembarking. So I guess essentially, uh, one boarding and, and ten and a half getting off. So for bus stop three twenty-seven, which is the one across the street, townbound, across from Wood Street, at which the shut, uh, bus stop shelter is installed, the following are the average daily ridership statistics for each morning and late evening hours between August twenty-third and November, uh, third, two thousand twenty-three. And that is about five o'clock, it's about point seven. Six, eleven, and twelve are point one, and that's boarding. For, uh, daily, average daily A lighting, and I don't really know what that is. It says zero, so. I don't know what that is. So DTS responded to the pedestrian crossing time concern across the Poly Highway last month. HDOT and DTS collaborate on safety issues along both state and city roadways. Since Poly Highway falls under DO, DTO, uh, HDOT jurisdiction, they would be the lead agency. Blow is the response from last month's pedestrian, uh, crossing time concern. So DC, DTS checked the pedestrian crossing time across Poly Highway between Jack Lane and Waikanaka Street and found the crossing times to be set appropriately. During the field check, DTS did observe the majority of pedestrians were following the pedestrian signals. A small number of pedestrians who started crossing when the hand was flashing could not complete the crossing before the signal changed. DCS wants to remind everyone that pedestrians should, should start to cross when this, across the street only when the white walkman appears and is safe to cross. Once the white walkman turns into a blinking red hand, you can continue to cross. However, if you not start to cross by this time, do not enter the walkway because you will not have sufficient time to make it across the street safely. When a solid red hand displayed, no one should cross the street. So that's, that's our response that we received from essentially DTS. Uh, before I go on to the last point, uh, does anyone want to have, uh, say anything about this? Robert?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'd just like to remind, uh, the board, uh, that I did introduce in twenty twenty-two, uh, that the board adopt a resolution for the rectangular rapid blinking beacons that could be placed, uh, because, uh, the board was hoping to get traffic lights installed, which Senator Rhodes was able to get monies, but the research and investigation does not support putting up, uh, those lights. And so I had introduced a resolution for the rectangular rapid, uh, beacons. And, uh, I'd like to remind the board that because we've had five deaths in that area on that highway, the last death, pedestrian death, was in twenty eighteen. So despite the amount of numbers at a bus stop, we do have statistics to show that the elderly and those that cross the street face extreme danger if not seen. So despite the timing seeming appropriate, uh, the view from vehicles might not be the best. And so we can enhance safety, uh, by using these beacons. So if the city, or in, in this case, if the state is not willing to put up any lights to protect our community, there are options. And I'd like to reintroduce that, uh, topic and, uh, the solution. And Senator Rhodes, uh, despite putting in the monies for the traffic light, he supported this resolution. And, uh, so he supported putting up the rap, rectangular rapid blinking beacons because the state wasn't willing to put up traffic lights. So again, with five deaths and the most recent on the highway pedestrian death in twenty eighteen, uh, we do have statistics that show that there can be improvements. And these lights, wherever they've been installed, there've been a ninety percent increase in pedestrian safety. So just the fact that vehicle operators can see someone in a crosswalk, even if it's only five times a day where it's a highway, it's extremely imperative, uh, for the state to understand the dangers our community faces. And so, you know, that's something for you folks to think about. And, uh, if, if maybe the board has a copy of the resolution and we can reintroduce that and see if the state would act on that, or the city.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I don't recall the particulars. I remember, uh, con-considering that. I'm not sure why we didn't move forward on that, but I'll look at, I, I'll look it up. I'm sure I have it, that information, and, uh, distribute that to the board so that we can at least review that, uh, at our next meeting. So thank you, Robert, for that. And without anything further. Yes, sir. Who said that?
We do have, we do have Senator Rhodes in person.
Oh, Senator Rhodes, nice to see you. Um, okay, well, uh, before we get to that, let me go over the last mayor's concern so that, and, and then if you want to address that in your, uh, report, uh, Senator, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so the last issue is, uh, commercial dumpsters. We did touch on this, but I just want to read the whole thing to make sure that the mayor's, uh, representative's report is complete. Um, so regarding the topic of commercial dumpsters, a resident provided photos, that we've seen, of dumpsters that are blocking the bus, the buses' access to the bus stops and sidewalks. So DTS contacted Honolulu Disposal Service and relayed, um, Board Number Twelve's concerns during the dumpster pickup days. Dumpsters are being placed front. the dumpster pickup days. Dumpsters are being placed fronting two bus stops on Lusitania. Uh, and DTS requested that they place the dumpsters in another area that does not uh that do that don't interfere with the bus operations. And as I mentioned earlier, DTS received a confirmation from Honolulu that they would address the issue. So, Robert, I'll tell you, i- if they're not addressing the issue, we can follow up again. But hopefully, um, I don't know if 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 the timing will be changed, but at least the placement, you know, because I I did convey that um, you know, the ADA ADA issues are are kind of are very significant. So so hopefully that will be addressed. Robert, did you want to just one last thing?
I I I appreciate it and I'll I'll send you pictures. So the timing has moved up to three in the morning and unfortunately dumpsters are still being placed there. Uh, it's just not as frequent. Uh, but we still have have a have trouble. But uh I'm comfortable with just reporting to you at this point, if that's okay.
Uh, okay, okay. Well, then I guess I can pass it on to the appropriate parties. Okay. Um, it, does anyone have any uh further comment or questions about the mayor's report? I can pass them along if you'd like. Pat, if if
Okay, um, the suggestion to put these beacons at the non-signalized crosswalks is very good because I crossed the highway at approximately six AM and it's still dark. And cars just dr- drive past me. I have a strobing flashlight that I use to get their attention and they still just fly through the crosswalks. So I really support having these lights installed because it'll show um, hopefully, the drivers that people are trying to cross the highway. Other than that, they're going through the crosswalks at forty, fifty miles per hour. It's very dangerous and it takes a while for me to get across the highway in order to catch the bus because I have to wait on the other side of the highway or in the middle and the bus is passed by. So, you know, we need to get the drivers aware that there are people crossing the highway.
Okay, well, I I will go back and I'll I'll find the information. If I can't find out, I'll reach out to Robert, but I'm sure I have it. So uh I'll send that out to our board members and we can consider that at our next meeting. Thank you. Hearing
One more thing, I'm sorry. The the fact, the reason why there are not that many people getting on the bus stop number three seventy-two, that's the one across from Polly uh from Wood Street, is because there are no um sidewalks that lead from the residential area to that bus stop. The only way you can get to that bus stop is by crossing the highway. Everything else is all grass and mud. So that would be the reason why there is very low uh ridership at that particular bus stop because it's very difficult to get to.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would actually be a really good thing to bring up directly to the mayor's rep uh the following month because they can report that back to DTS probably better than I would probably write it diplomatically, but that would actually be something very good to repeat to the mayor's rep next month. Thank you. Um, Paula, did you want to add something before we move on?
I know a comment was made that there were no lights that were tried previously, but they got to remember history because I'm old, but when I was Neighborhood Board Chair, we did have lights that were put in. But the state, DOT or whoever, took our lights and sent them over to Leeward. It was at Jack Lane. And so because they took it away from Jack Lane, Jack Lane got their own light. So I don't know what the problem is why we couldn't use the five point two million for our light. There's too many people that are going to get hurt. And um, Mr. Endo, I hope is up there in heaven watching us right now because he didn't need to die just because people were stupid. And we don't have enough uh people telling them, "Stop speeding on the Polly Highway. You're going through a community, a big community." So they're not being, now that the road's fixed, it's going to be even worse speeding. So if you don't think people are going to get killed, they sure are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, uh, next up, we have uh councilman, Councilmember uh De Santos Tams, Representative Lisa Leonardo. I see Lisa there, so please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I just wanted to touch on some of the things that were discussed um earlier. I put in the chat when we were talking about um the feral pigs. Um, Waua Pig Hunters Association is still trying to work with everybody to trap pigs. Uh, Brandon Mitsuda from our office, he's been working with getting access to the state and city lands um in New Wauanu and the surrounding areas. In the chat, I put uh the Pig Hunters Association who to contact, which is the, we have the president's phone number, Vice President, Secretary, and the Sergeant of Arms. Oh, I don't have, I don't think I have one for that. But if you ever have any other questions, feel free to call our office. Um, and then we were talking about uh streams and I did uh get some information. Our Constituent Services Director Lynn, she put in a riser, request for ins- uh Investigation Service request. Um, and this had to do with the New Wauanu stream near the Congregational Church. Um, so the church is being pressured to trim the trees by neighbors and an arborist has assessed the health and condition of the trees. So we sent that in uh early part of November. It, the managing director referred, referred it to the Department of Facility Maintenance and the information that we got back was the same thing that the mayor's office, uh what you had reported, uh Chair Smith, earlier. Uh, what we tried to do is reach out to um Rep Takanu Uchi's office and see if we can work with Department of DLR on on a little bit more information from that. So that's where we are with the stream. Um, and then uh for Robert, uh regarding the trash pickup, um, our Constituent Services Director Lynn, I believe she reached out to you either by phone or an email. So if you don't mind giving her a call back or responding to the email, that would be great. She's going to try her her best to work with you on that as well. Um, and then just want to bring up some things that we have on our newsletter. Um, really thankful for this group working on neighborhood security watches. We are trying our best within our district to to bring up more of those. It seems to be helping out a lot with the neighborhood, with crime and reducing, but you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while, but we're trying our hardest to work on those. Um, and then some of the bills that are coming up, Bill fifty-seven, fifty-eight regarding gay rooms. Um, if you can look in our newsletter, it has more information on that. And then uh just one other thing I wanted to point out on the bottom of our, the last page of the newsletter, wildfire emergency preparedness resources. Uh, we're working within our community to be able to get more information as what we can do in each of our little neighborhoods um to be prepared for wildfires, fires, and things around your household. Um, so at this time, that's pretty much what I have to report. Um, I'll be putting my contact information and our office contact information in the chat if anyone would like to reach back out to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? For uh councilmembers, Representative Paula?
Um, I've had many questions about neighbors who do not clean their yards along their fence line where it's like straw and what you do for that. Do you call the police, uh the fire department or do you you try to write them a letter or what do you do? Because they don't seem to quite get it that we're in the fire season. Well, now at least God, it rained today. So that might help, but it's unbelievably thick and it's unbelievably ready to go if somebody just throws a match or something.
Right. So if you see that, um, please feel free to call our office and then we will get in touch with the with the right people and get that information. Um, I just put that in the chat. And I answered the phone, so you'll be getting me.
Promise.
I promise.
I promise.
I promise.
Thank you. I think uh next up is Reggie.
Hi, um, for that kind of issue, you can call the Department of Planning and Permitting Housing Corps, Housing Code Enforcement. Just to let you know.
Can you repeat that?
Do they, do they answer the phone?
Department of Planning and Permitting Housing Enforcement.
Thank, thank you, thank you very much.
What is the number?
Well, let me go look it up and I'll put it in the chat.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Reggie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Sylvia? Uh, Sylvia, you're muted.
I'm uh, I know I didn't mention it to the police again because it seems as though they can't. I mean, it's very difficult for the police to enforce this, but we're still having a lot of problems with fireworks being, and now I'm not, not bombs, you know, firecracker bombs, but we've been getting aerial stuff that's in our area. And the thing that worries me is that, like Paula just said, you know, it's been dry and there's um so I'm I'm more worried because it's dry that this aerial stuff will end up in my yard and something will be catch on fire. So I don't know what can be done on the city level of um getting the council member to um introduce something to find them. If they get, just get caught, fine them a huge fine because they're endangering people's lives.
I can take that back to the council member and um uh I believe we have your phone number. Maybe we can get in touch and ask some maybe any of your ideas. But I can take that back to him.
Yeah, it can't be a little slap on the hand kind of fine. You know, it needs to be a good size amount of fine. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Patrick?
Hey, there you go.
Patrick disappeared.
All right, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Can everyone? Okay, good. Sorry, uh, I'm having some trouble tonight for some reason. I hope that was all resolved and I'm not cutting anyone off. Um, were there any other, uh, I see Mason.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now I can't.
Oh, no.
No. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, no, I agree with Sylvia because here, right near the park, we have the same problem. And we have huge trees in our back in across the street at Booth Park. Now, those aerials that go up, what if one hits a branch that's dry? It's going to have a, we're going to have a wildfire here. Another one, just like Maui. And all it takes is a few aerials. And that's, and that's our problem, not only now, but it's been doing it all the, all year round. Even even if it's not New Year's, New Year's Eve, they just, they go bananas with it. You know, so it, something has to be done. You know, I, I agree. I back up Sylvia one hundred percent.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, are there any um last comments for the councilmembers representative? Hearing none. Uh, Lisa, thank you very much for uh coming out tonight. We appreciate your help and thank you for uh working on these issues for us. We we appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too. Uh, next up, oh, I'm sorry. Next up, we have Governor uh Josh Green's representative. I see William on the line. Nice to have you back.
Hi, Audrey, thanks for having me. Uh, William, new Governor Green's representative. Um, just kind of highlighting that as we kind of move forward um following the mild wildfires, uh last month, we were able to, the Lahaina area schools were able to reopen with seven hundred students returning to Lahaina Luna High School and four hundred students returned to Lahaina uh intermediate school. There are two elementary schools in the area also reopened. In the last week, um, the governor's initiatives were focused on kind of recovery and of housing the support and providing support for the families who are affected. Uh, Department of Human Services launched a interim disaster case management program which provides caseworkers and kind of mental health advocates for individual families and in folks who are displaced by the mild wildfires. In addition, um, the HHFC or, sorry, Hoi Housing Finance and Finance Development Corporation is also looking for more volunteers and households to provide shelter for displaced families. They provided, they're currently housing about five hundred folks through the program, but they're looking for additional households to shelter um displaced residents going forward. So that's kind of a quick summary of uh the governor's report and the newsletter items. Um, and I'm free to take in questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Uh, Audrey?
Uh, William, hi. Um, did you get the report that uh the chair talked about the stream with the tree? And I think this was uh brought to your attention uh five, six, seven months ago. So I mean, so I don't, I know you don't have an answer tonight, but it's like in tennis, it's back in your court because the city um is not theirs. So can you follow up, please?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I think I overheard it a little bit while I was um while I was here. Um, Chair Smith, did you happen to have the language that you poured on to me? I think you read it out loud, but I wasn't able to. I would like to have the uh the content.
Yeah, I'll be happy to uh forward that on and uh maybe I can get with Paula and Audrey, just make sure I have everything they want to address is on there. So yeah, I'll forward that on to you for next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
A chair, yes.
I can forward to you.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 thank you. Uh, thank you, Lisa. Uh, I'm sorry, Audrey, go ahead.
It's two different situations. Paula has one and I have a longstanding one. So just two different
Okay, well, then that, I guess that's why it's important to clarify. So, um, yeah, let let me do that and and we'll make sure that uh everybody, everybody's issue gets addressed because I think Paula's is still uh DL and R uh also. So, okay, it's good to know there are two separate issues, but I can get with Lisa to
And William has pictures from when I sent him, I don't know, seven, eight, nine months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, Robert, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, aloha, William. Uh, I just been uh awaiting an opportunity to share my appreciation. Uh, I know the State Department of Transportation is not here, but I just wanted to uh let you know in the governor's office now that I'm extremely uh grateful and happy with uh the road services, the that that's been going on, not only on the Polly Highway, but on H one, uh the repaving has been just beyond my expectations. Uh, the quality of work I really appreciate and the way that they've mitigated the traffic and their uh the traffic hazards, it's just uh, it's a very professional crew that's going out there and I really appreciate it. It's been a long time since I've seen work at at such a good level of craftsmanship and uh with consideration for the public. So I've been waiting for you to come back, so I could just share my appreciation for the Department of Transportation and uh happy Thanksgiving. I know you've been working hard. Uh, hopefully you get some rest and respite on this holiday season. Thank you, William.
Thank you. I'll carry it back to the team. I think you actually mentioned that um at the last month's meeting, which I was here at last month's meeting, I think you raised that concept. I did pass it on to our Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any uh last comments, questions, concerns for uh Paula?
I just wanted to thank you also, but I want to know what's the secret in the legislature to get some of our bills passed because we're in a situation in this board where we're taking care of the Polly Highway and having to live with it. And the other part of our board has to sit and listen to me all the time about smaller things, except they do have speeding, et cetera. On our highway, is there a way that we can get the people in the legislature to listen to us because they're not listening and more people are going to get killed? And you can tell him for, for me that also the helmet bill didn't get passed for the third time. So he knows about legacy of life and tell him that Paula is coming up in the holes to bother him again. Thank you. Talk to those guys about preservation of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, William, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out this evening and have a great holiday, or holiday season, I should say. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Senator Carl Rhodes. Senator, nice to have you back. Thank you for joining us.
Nice to be back. Can you hear okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So let me just address a couple of the things that have come up in the board meeting already. Crossings on the Poly. Yeah, I, I agree that it's, it's still an issue and it's just a matter of time before somebody else gets killed in a crosswalk, probably trying to cross to the bus stop at Wood Street. So if you guys pursue it, I would suggest trying to get DOT to give me a dollar amount and I will try to get the money, even though it's not my preferred solution and even though they've turned down the 5.2 or 5.3 million dollars and I got them already. But if, if they, I will fight for it at the ledge, but I'm, I'm reluctant to fight for it if they're not willing to commit to doing it because I've already been down that road. It's hard to get money from my colleagues and I, I don't, it's, it's probably a waste of time unless I know that they're gonna, they're gonna go ahead and do it if we get it. So I think that would where, where the board would be very helpful is if you can just get, try to get DOT to commit to doing it and then find out how much money they want. So that's my suggestion there. I, I think one of the reasons those bus number stops are so low is because people are A, afraid to cross the highway, which is understandable considering what's happened there, and B, they're afraid to stand at the stop because it's pitch black. And so, you know, you have to, you have to set things up so that it's user friendly for people to use it. And so it's no surprise to me that the, that the bus, that the numbers aren't very high there. I mean, it probably would never be super high, but I'm, I can't believe that darkness and danger of crossing a street, a highway, a six lane highway doesn't factor into it. So, okay, I'll get off my horse on that one. On fireworks, there, there are state law that already, there's substantial penalties for fireworks and there, there can be felony, felony charges if the amount of fireworks are big enough. The problem is it almost always means that some, a neighbor has to, first of all, report it to the police and then be willing at least to go into court. Not all, not everything goes to a trial, of course, but most people aren't willing to, to turn their neighbors in. So I get that because you gotta live next to them, but that's, but there are fines. There are already substantial fines and even prison time for fireworks violations. The other thing I would mention though is that last session, we did pass, it was an item in the budget, $50,000 for a, a task force joint between the, I guess it's, well, all the different agencies and I, I believe also between the city and the county and the feds on fireworks interdiction. And I did talk to the Department of, the director of the Department of Law Enforcement recently, and he said that they are actively pursuing a number of cases and they hope to make a dent in the supply. And it was terrified me, but apparently, I, I thought it was all coming in by ship, but apparently that's not true. They're sneaking fireworks shipments or fire, illegal fireworks shipments onto airplanes now too, which strikes me as extremely dangerous. So I'm hopefully, anyway, I'm quite hopeful that they, not, I'm not hopeful. They are working on it because of money that we gave them last session and, you know, I hope for good results from that. Okay, the, the reason I'm wearing a tie is because we, I'm the chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Senate and we confirmed two Supreme Court justices today, a man named Vladimir Devens, a longtime attorney, it was confirmed 21 to nothing. And a woman, Lisa Ginoza, who is currently the chief judge at the Intermediate Court of Appeals, was, got the other position. She was also approved 21 to nothing. So we now have five members again on our Supreme Court, but now we only have six members on the Intermediate Court of Appeals, so we'll have to replace that person. But anyway, that's, that's for probably this coming session. With regarding the pigs, I, I am working with Councilmember DeSantis' TAM's office and we're trying to get, the part that I'm, I'll be trying to help with is DLNR, getting permission to go on to whatever areas the pig hunters need to go on to, to keep the, keep the populations of pigs low enough so that they're not wandering into the neighborhood. So we will be, continue to work on that as well and I'll update you as we, as we know more. I still haven't quite stopped, I haven't got to the point where I'm willing to stop reporting on COVID. Thankfully, the numbers were way down this week. We only had 376 new cases and there were three deaths for the week, which is still too many, but way better than the week before. So that's good. Still a top 10 cause of death in the country as a whole. And as everyone's probably aware by now, there was a, a new booster came out in late September and I encourage you to get that, especially if you're over 60 like me and you're more vulnerable, or if you're living with someone who's, who is vulnerable for some reason. And then wearing masks, it's great to see people wearing masks still inside especially. It's, there's still some virus going around. And then switching diseases, flu shots are also now available. We're coming up on the, the heavy part of flu season. And again, especially if you're older, it's a really good idea to get a flu shot. Unbelievably, the, the 2024 session is almost here, starts in January. So if you have any, any new bill ideas, please let me know. You can contact my office by calling. It's 5866130 or my email address is senrhoads@capital.hawaii.gov and we will, the sooner the better because it doesn't, you can't, it's, it's hard to, it takes a little time to put bills together, even if the idea is fairly simple. And I believe that's it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I see that Mason already has his hand up for the board questions. Mason, please go ahead.
I have two things, Senator Rhodes. I spoke to the police department one time in the past about fireworks and they said they have to catch them in the act, which is ridiculous. You know, I understand. And the problem is, people, people don't complain that they live around there, that people doing fireworks. If you live next to somebody that does fireworks, shouldn't they say something, call the police or something? I, I don't understand this fireworks stuff, but that's, that's how I feel.
The police, they, they need witnesses. They don't, they like to, they like to see it themselves because they're professional witnesses, basically. They're used to being on the stand. They know how to handle that situation, you know, what, what, what they, what you're, how to tell the truth in effective, in an effective way. But the, what bill we passed two years ago specifically says that you don't have to, they don't have to see it, but you still need witnesses and that, and that's to your point where neighbors don't really, often don't like to report it. So that's, that's where, that's why we're at, that's why we're at that spot in terms of, at the street level, what the situation is.
All right. Okay. Yeah, well, we, we see sometimes they're two o'clock in the morning and you're sleeping and they let off one of these bombs.
Yep. I hear them all the time.
Yeah, you live close to where I am, so I'm sure you hear. And then the second group asked question, whatever happened to that money that you got for, that you tried to get us and got us, but then now we lost it somehow?
Yeah, so any appropriation and I did, we, we did get the money and any appropriation lapses after a certain period of time. So if, if for whatever reason, the government doesn't spend the money on whatever it was, it, any, anything, not just for highway stuff. And it's, it's lapsed. I forget exactly when it lapsed, but it's been a while. Like it's been almost, maybe it's, it was either the end of last year or the end of the year before that. I don't remember, but it has lapsed and, and we have not tried to get it back because they, because DOT has indicated they're not going to spend it.
Hopefully they don't get any more deaths then, if that's the case, you know?
Yeah.
Off our fingers, off our fingers. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Paula?
Just wanted to tell you it was June of last year, 2022, that we lost the money.
When it last, okay, yeah, I couldn't remember what the date was. It's been a while.
But thank you for letting us know what's going on.
Thank, thank you. Are, are there any other questions, concerns or comments for Senator from the board or from the community? Hearing none. Senator, thank you very much for your report. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. And next up, we have Representative Jenna Takanuchi. Is someone from her office or is the representative available this evening?
I don't see.
Hearing none. Is, are there any other elected officials that we haven't heard from that would like to hear, like to speak? Hearing none, we can move on to our board business. I have to put my glasses on for this. First off, we have the bus route 121. I promised to keep that on the agenda. We did address that. I don't know if there are any further comments, but it, it seems like that's sort of been, that issue is unfortunately set in stone now. Yes, Paula?
The physical therapist who worked for the state for 30 some, 38 years, I want to say that they have not done the right thing for the, for the people that are disabled, including the blind, including people in wheelchairs. They have not, they have not come through with the things that they need to do, including the state highway. That's my opinion and I do think that there should be a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are, are there any other comments from the board? Pat, please go ahead.
I just wanted to add that they had suggested some things a couple of meetings back, doing the handy van and, and all of that. I'm just wondering, has that just been swept under and there isn't, not going to be pursued?
Well, I, I don't know about the handy van, but I do know there is a proposal to maybe give vouchers for taxis. But I think that's going through county council and I guess we can ask Lisa, I don't know if Lisa Leonardo is still here, but.
I'm still on. I will follow up on that. I, I remember that from like two meetings back, I mean.
Yeah, when, when that was in the public meeting that that was talked about, that was prior to, I guess, the council member, but I think, as I recall, and I wasn't there, of course, that the council member and its staff just had, it was just about the bus itself. But I know the larger DTS issue was that there, there was a proposal to do the voucher. So, but I assume unfortunately, anything with council takes, takes a while to process. But yeah, Lisa, if you'd let us know, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, we personally spoke to DTS. So for those two things, I can ask to get a follow up on that. And then I think I was, there was also something about a development plan and also working with Vision Zero, that maybe if, if you guys could be a part of that development plan and put certain things in there, so even for the future, things like this that happened to Route 121 may not happen again.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's the, the, I can't remember the name of the plan, but I think that's more like the development plan. I, yeah, if you'd let me know what the plan you're talking about, that would concern transportation issues. I'd appreciate it and I'll let the board know. Thank you. Pat, did you want to follow up or I'll, I can get Paula?
Basically, this is something that seems to be not of a concern to a lot of people. And it's because they themselves don't have to cross Poly Highway. And that's too bad.
Okay, thank you. Paula?
At one time I gave 16 different pictures over to the state through the Office of Aging to go to Vision One, I guess, or whatever they call that. Showing all the things that a disabled person would have problems with. And that also included this whole area in our area from lower Dulce to upper Dulce in this circle or horseshoe. And I don't know who's ever looked in any of those pictures, but they can't deny any of those problems that are there. There's situations where people in a wheelchair can't even get up and down the Poly Highway. So if they're saying they never saw the pictures, I don't know what they did with them. I would sure like to know because that was a wasted time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia?
You know, I found out, and this is all news that I've learned in this past year. The state and city makes it very difficult for people who are disabled. If you, I mean, they, it's really crazy. And if they're talking about this voucher business, I don't know who's going to be able to even get the vouchers. Look at this. I have a handicap placard for my car, but I cannot drive. So I have people taking me around and I need the disabled stalls because I can't walk far.
Me too.
Because I have that sticker, it means I am not eligible for the handy van. And I live, I can catch the bus. That allows me to catch the bus, but it does not allow me to use the handy van and I can't get to the bus because I can't walk from my house to the closest bus line. So what is the situation? You know, I, I mean, you, you have a choice. You can take the ha, the handicap placard as your choice to get your transportation or, but you have no other choices of transportation if you need to. The only other way that you can get transportation is take a taxi or by Uber. So it does end up costing a handicap because you're handicapped, you, or I should say disabled, because you're disabled, you're a force to spend more money because you gotta take the taxi or like an Uber. So I don't know what's, what the thing is, but that's the rule that I found out that when I couldn't get a personal transportation from any of my family or my friends, my choice was to take a private taxi or an Uber. There was nothing else available for the disabled.
Right.
Okay. Does anyone want to add any more comments? Okay, thank you. Paula, did you want to?
I agree with everything she just said because I'm in the same boat and I have to depend on somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Chair. Hi Sylvia, this is news to me. So I'm just finding out. So previously I could, because I have the placard and I could use a handy van also. So I wasn't aware that there was a rule change, but I did want to let you know that, so if you have Medicare, they have transportation. You just have to call up a day ahead and it's covered. The disabled people is covered. So you have a, an ability to call and it's a little better than the handy van. So maybe we can get in touch if you'd like me to help you find your motive care coordinator so that you can actually get picked up from your home and dropped off at wherever you're going. Usually it's a doctor's appointment is endless, but to, for grocery shopping, you have 12 a year and doctors' appointments to and from is as much as needed. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Robert. That's helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Robert, for that information. That's good to know. But there's a lot of laws on the disabled that was changed July 1st, 19. But there is a lot of laws on the disabled that was changed July 1st, 19, I mean, 2022 and 2023. Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, it was 2022. Changes and even with that blue pack placard that you have, you cannot park on the street unless you feed the meter. There's no free parking for you anymore. You have to pay for the green placard in order to have parking on the street.
Okay, well, I have your contact number, so I'll be in touch with you, Sylvia.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so hearing nothing further on this issue, we can go on to our next board business, which is the early morning trash collection. I think we, we've talked about that and addressed that to the extent it was needed, I think. So hearing nothing further, we can move on to the Papakalea Community Concerns. And Adrian, did you want to take the lead on that? Adrian, are with us? Actually, you're, you're very remote sounding. Would it, can you adjust your audio a little bit, please? Okay, we.
I have nothing.
Okay, yes, now we can. Thank you. So nothing to update. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions? I guess with nothing to offer or nothing to update, then there shouldn't be. Meeting location options. I did put this on here because as everyone knows, we were unable to meet in the, in the fiscal, in the district at a fiscal location. There was some sickness in various chains of command. So it delayed us a little bit, but the schools, that we looked at two schools and they were all closed, I guess, because of Thanksgiving holiday. They just weren't able to entertain us and we had an option to meet at Wahoo Country Club, but due to time issue, that really didn't pan out either. So what I would like is maybe if we could do it next month, or not next month, next meeting, which would be January 21st, I think, or whatever day, whatever day the meeting, meeting is for next month. I'll try to get Poa Elementary since that's been our traditional meeting spot. And hopefully, you know, everyone can make an attempt. I know everyone, you know, that's not possible for some people, but you know, if you can, that would be great. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to that. I'm sorry that we couldn't pull it off this month. But hopefully we can do it next month and we, we can get a picture of everyone who can come in person. That would be great. Anything, anybody want to add anything? Hearing, yes. Mason, go ahead.
January 16th, 2024 is the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, FYI.
Thank you very much. Okay. So next up, we have our approval of the October 17 minutes. Everybody should have received that in the mail or in the email also. Are there any amendments to what has been distributed? Hearing none, the amendments, the minutes will be deemed approved as distributed. Thank you very much. And that concludes our business unless anyone else has anything they want to add real quickly. Hearing none, next up, we have our announcements. Our next meeting, as Mason pointed out, will be January 16th, hopefully at Poa Elementary. Just keep a lookout for that as time gets closer. You know, I, I can't really read these very well. The broadcast of the, on Olelo, Channel 49, the first Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM. And also check the Google page and there was a link for all the handouts. And that includes all the states, all the state and the collected officials, their newsletters and such. Are there any other announcements? I see Paula. Go ahead, please.
I just want to ask why they chose first Thursday at 6 o'clock when everyone is just coming home from work and feeding their kids and everything. So no one can ever watch us. Why did we get put at 6 o'clock in the evening? We're not at a decent hour so people can watch. Thank you.
You know, I would assume that that was purely some administrative person in the NTO department, probably just.
I guess they don't have children and things to do.
I, I guess. So they didn't, they didn't ask and they just put it on, so.
When you say, can you tell them that I disagree with that, that it should be a little bit later? You can settle in.
I will, I will actually send a note and let them know that, that some of our board members have expressed concern about that time slot, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Certainly. Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, I will add, everyone have a great holiday season and be safe. And I hope everyone has, you know, has, can spend some time with their children, their loved ones and have a great time. And thank you very much for your service. I look forward to seeing everyone next year and hopefully we will have a chance to get together because it would be nice to just have that, that in-person meeting. Thank you very much and I'll, I'll count the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Love everyone. Happy holidays.
Goodbye, everybody.
Don't eat too much.
Happy holidays. I see you next year.
Chair, happy holidays.
Bye-bye.
Efficient meeting too.